Closed meeting be closed and the board certifies with the best of every member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting to which this certification applies and only such business matters as were identified in the motion concerning the closed meetings were heard, discussed, or considered.
Sum of.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Sturtevant, seconded by Mr. Edwards. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sturtevant?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes.
Now if you'll stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have our superintendent's report.
Okay, tonight, as we're looking at items for superintendent's report, I just want to bring to your attention that we have worked with the schools, the high schools in particular, in putting together a schedule for club meetings for the year, and we will be working on that process to give students more opportunity through the year to have access to more clubs and be given support for those types of things. I want to bring to your attention, second, that we had a meeting, I mean, I had a meeting, and I think also at the time, we had Mr. Edwards with us when the Finance Committee of the Board of Supervisors met related to the energy project financing and the bond information. We have Mr. Wayne Carter and a representative from them that has given out information and will be giving a presentation about what the Board of Supervisors did and the way that they went about doing it. So, if you will, Mr. Carter, we invite you to come up and go through that with us.
This is RT Taylor with Davenport. Want to thank y'all. First off, we met regarding the proposed energy efficiency. What was discussed was with the amount of the borrowing being 1.3 million, and the fact that you're going to have a fair number of set fees, whether you go through VPSA or the private bank. And if you go with the bank, they're going to want some kind of collateral, being the schools. And we didn't want to put the schools up. What the board looked at was and discussed was doing a 2% 15-year note, which is less than what Train was giving you all as what they said banks were lending at the time. We do a set 15-year. That way you can show the payment back that you need to show to the ESCO so that then, and then the additional savings would just go to y'all. So that, let's say, just for even numbers, $100,000 per year would go into your debt service line item of your budget, then would be paid back to the county, just like you would have paid it to Bank of America or Person or whoever, and whatever other savings on top of that would go to you all. And we would save those set fees and having to put up, for example, some kind of collateral with those three schools. So, that was the first thing.
Can I, can I ask?
Sure.
A little question. The part of the ESCO agreement, does the interest, is the interest rate have to be within a certain percentage of the market rate?
I don't know.
Or?
I haven't seen the ESCO agreement, so I don't have any idea on that. Right now, I think when Ted looked at, what Train gave y'all was two, three point?
Brian has that information.
Two point six.
Yes, I mean, we're within a half a point. We were trying to get below it. We weren't trying to, you know, do anything on it, but we felt that was an even number. It was just, you know, we're less than three quarters of a point below what the ESCO was actually estimating you would be able to go out and bar. And one of the things that you would have to do is put up some kind of collateral, whether those be the fixtures, whether they take those kind of things or not, we didn't know. There are always some fees with any transaction, that way we would have all those fees, especially with a borrowing from like VPSA.
We do know that there was a schedule that was run by Train, and by the numbers that they put into that fee, we would have been in the third or fourth year before we would have been in the black. With this, we will be in, back in the black and after the first year with the 2%, according to the projections that they're giving us on that.
That's right.
And at the end, there was considerably more savings at the end.
We felt like you probably needed something to show the ESCO you are paying that back out, so therefore, we thought this was a good way to do it. Y'all have questions on me on that?
It's a great plan, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next, I'm going to let RT take over. He's going to go over what we discussed at the meeting was, of course, looking at the $100 million. And what the board discussed was, we had a separate meeting earlier with Mr. Gordon, myself, Sandra, and Judy, and Ted Cole with Davenport, of why interest rates are low, trying to fix some of that money in at this low rate, okay? Very similar to what some other counties done, like Halifax is doing on their courthouse. You know you're going to need more than this, but you go in and get a certain amount so you can go ahead and get started on the project, things of that nature. And if rates happen to creep up, you at least aren't going to get that creep, that factor on that 50 million or whatever you decide to do. We felt that 50 was a good number because that was a large part of the building, and that would give us time to go out and bid. And then, of course, you've got, VPSA only does two offerings a year, so depending upon when you got started, the contractor started before you had your bids, that'd give you enough money to operate and pay the bills for those months until you got the project up and running. I'll let RT go over. The numbers with you all, you have your handouts. Sure. Thank you, Wayne. Thank you for having us here this evening, too. As Wayne pointed out, y'all are going down the road and the projects are evolving, so the concept would be to go ahead and submit an application to reserve your spot in the fall VPSA pool. The application is due by August 28th, and you can see in the timeline at the back of the presentation we handed out. Let's, if you would, let's look to the timeline, sort of hop around a little bit if you'd be a little bit flexible on that. But basically, that's the point for tonight, is you have a resolution to consider this evening that gives us permission to submit that application to VPSA to reserve that spot. Right now, the thought is to preserve up to $50 million. Again, the projects are evolving, so that number will be firmed up by the time you enter the pool. The submission of that application does not necessarily obligate you to participate in the fall pool. You have until October 3rd, that's sort of your last chance to pull out at that time if you have clarity that you don't want to proceed, but the thought would be, as Wayne explained, go ahead while rates are starting to tick up, go ahead and lock in some portion of the projects you know you're going to be funding and move forward, and then, you know, by the time the spring pool would roll around next year, looking back, you would be happy if you locked in rates in the fall and they continue ticking up through the spring. And that's sort of to the point on the previous two pages from the schedule where we provide a little bit of an overview of how municipal rates are trending. So if you want to look at page four, the municipal market data rate for 30-year term, which this is what your projected financing term would be is over 30 years, the chart on the right-hand side, 30-year MMD over the last 12 months, you can see has been ticking up. So again, the point would be to lock in some portion of the financing this fall through the VPSA pool. In order to do that, we would need permission from y'all this evening through the resolution to be able to submit that application by the due date this August. And VPSA is very, like we are, they're very amicable. We've got it set up for either the high school, middle school complex, if we can agree upon a site, move on to the elementary, you can make it either way. You can lower your rate. They really don't like you to go up, so you can lower. You can lower the number of years, if you wanted to go down to 25, good. So there's flexibility in VPSA for that. And what we thought was, we'll have a report back, we talked to the engineers, they'll have the report back on the site study by September 1st. They'll hopefully give us a month to work out those details to move forward. Rates picked up a lot after the election, they slowly kind of brought themselves back down, so we didn't want to lose this opportunity. But it only happens twice a year, and until this point, we really couldn't bar because we had to agree on one school, two schools, any of those things. So, we're trying to move forward, plus VPSA wants you to use the money with, obligate the money within three years. Correct. So, that's kind of how we're trying to progress with this, is moving forward in that process.
I have a question. Mr. Sherr.
Ms. Bailey?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure that all of the mics are on. Will you check?
My, my light is on.
It is, okay.
The three-year clock, when does the clock start? At the November 7th funding date or after that?
Correct. Once you obtain those funds.
So it's not at the October 3rd, but at the November 7th?
Correct.
Okay.
And you don't have to have every penny spent by then, but they want you to be in the construction and be doing something. They realize that you might be designing a building and it takes two, two or three years to build it out, so it might take you a year or longer to design it, but they want to some kind of, the fact that you're not going to be just doing this and waiting 10 years and building your building. You know, this is an idea that you've got to go forward and be progressing with the project. That's right. And it's sort of part and parcel, meaning if you obtain a portion of funds this fall, you have three years from that funding date to spend those proceeds, and then by next spring, if you do go through another issuance, the clock starts anew for those funds. And ultimately, your bond counsel, Steve Johnson, would be able to help work through those requirements with y'all, make sure y'all are staying, you know, inbound, so to speak.
You go ahead.
On page three?
Yes, ma'am.
Of your report?
Mm-hmm.
Can you elaborate on some of these, the French that's at the top? Scenario one is the 2017 Fall Pool CM. What does CM stand for?
That's just current market, and we have that footnote at the bottom. We ran, we ran a current market scale as of July 6th.
Okay.
So, so if you were to presumably go out into the market on July 6th, these would be the estimated results you would get. We work closely with our desk upstairs, the folks that are trading, buying, selling bonds on a daily basis, and they help, they do the underwritings and what have you, and they're able to sort of reach out into the market and get a good sense of what's going on, and that's.
So, so in scenario three and four, there's CM plus 10 BPS and CM minus 10. What is the BPS?
That's basis points. So, 10 basis points would just be a... Tenth of one percent. Yes, a percentage of that. There's 100 basis points in every... Percent.
Okay.
So when they talk, they go, this moved up 27 basis points. That means it went up 0.27.
0.27 percent.
Okay, but that's how they deal with it over there. So if you, if you have a loan for 2%, and it goes up 10 basis points, that'd be 2.1 percent.
Thank you.
And basically, for every tenth of a point, what that's showing is, it costs us another million dollars in interest. That's right. Or saves us a million.
Or it saves, yeah. But I noticed scenario four.
Right. So that's why we want him to do that, so we could show that kind of savings is over that 30-year. And there's no, no way you can time the market, really, but Wayne brought up a good point earlier. Halifax County took the same methodology, the same approach to their courthouse and locked in a substantial portion of their projects last fall ahead of the election, and it proved, even though rates have pulled back, they haven't pulled back to quite that level, so it's proved to be a very good methodology and approach to it. So, as you see on these charts in here, rates continue to tick up. And we did the same thing somewhere on original landfill refinancing and original jail financing. It's again, it's like refinancing your house, you know? When do you decide? But on these, you've only got certain dates, so it's not like on your house, you can go, okay, today lock me in. On this, it's, okay, we're going to go for the fall pool, and once we commit on October 3rd, yay, let's say, we can get out. If it goes up, it's just going up. You just, that's, that's, it's a get, but that's the way it is anytime you borrow the money on a school or any kind of structures or anything, VRA or VPSA.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Has it been, VPSA is only for school building projects. Is that correct?
Correct.
Has it been your experience that there's a limited amount of money in that pool for schools across the state to be able to use?
No, this is different than, you may be thinking of like the lit loan program or the literary fund program. This is completely different.
The literary fund.
This is where, based on the needs of the participants, regardless of what the amount is, VPSA at their high credit rating allows localities to sort of pool their efforts and piggyback off of that relatively high rating.
Okay.
And it's based off, it's a notch or so off the state AAA rating.
I was confusing it with the literary loan, which has a limited amount, and I know there's a lot of school divisions that are going after that money, and I was wondering if we needed, from the perspective of getting in in time to be able to get what we need for that purpose, but that's not an issue.
This is not the waitlist approach, correct?
Okay.
If you're willing to wait for it, you get a lower rate at VPSA, I don't think we want to wait for you.
Right, I just, I was just curious.
So therefore, that's why we're going to the VPSA. You are, they are AAA? It's actually, it's a notch off AAA, so it's AA plus, AA one, AA plus. So what you're doing is the state's backing, okay, on this and VRA, so that's why we get such low rates. But to the best of our knowledge, based on what Ted has told us, there is no cap. They sell 100 million, they sell 100 million. They sell a billion, they sell a billion. And depending upon markets, some people are looking for long-term. And I think it's important to note, based on this conversation we're having, if you go back to page four, we're still at historically very favorable rates, so it's not doom and gloom, but there's, you know, an argument to be made, like we used again in the case study of Halifax, locking in a portion as rates begin to tick up, and the 10 basis points potentially cost you a million dollars over the life of the loan, it sort of makes sense to at least go ahead and take some of that risk off the table. And this way, this action tonight will not obligate you all or the Board of Supervisors. You've got to come back, you've got other resolutions you've got to do. This just allows us to apply to VPSA and get into their queue.
But this board does need to approve this concept tonight.
Correct. The resolution that Steve gave you is the, what allows us to make the application on this basis.
Right.
Okay? You've still got other resolutions, I think. Yes, sir. If you would, flip back to page six again, that's the timeline, and we'll, we'll just walk through it real quickly. So tonight, July 18th, we're looking for your consideration of adopting the resolution that gives us permission to submit that application, okay? VPSA requires you take formal action to approve submission of an application. Next, County Board and the School Board will come back in their August meetings presumably, or if need be, a special meeting, but it has to be by the week of September 11th, because that's when VPSA requires that the School Board actually, again, take formal action and ask the county to issue bonds on their behalf, okay? And then the County Board has to take their formal action to approve moving forward with a bond issuance, okay? So that all has to transpire by the week of September 11th, and then, then you start having the working group conference calls with VPSA, their bond counsel, your bond counsel, county staff, us as your financial advisor, and that sort of culminates into that, that drop dead date of October 3rd, and that's sort of your last chance to say, hey, do we have a good bead on what amounts we want to do, what have you? That's when you give VPSA sort of your final number for this pool. You can still have some things moving around with the projects, but again, we're, we're keeping it very flexible in the application process up to $50 million, up to 30 years, and we can fine tune that as the process evolves. Yes, I understand that VPSA, if you drop out by the 3rd, it's fine, they just lower their mouse if they're going to have, but they don't like to go up. So they're trying to give that information out, and we were having those basis points up and down, but they start doing is, every couple of weeks, they'll give us an update and go, okay, this is where, where it's at, so we know whether it's trending up, how it's trending, or down, or flat, so that, as part of this is, on that October 3rd, Board of Supervisors got to have a special meeting because they've got to say yay or nay, that they're going to bar the money. And we probably won't decide that until October 3rd. That's what we've done on some of our other projects on refinancing, because you're having to look and see if it's financially good for you to refinance someone, in this case, which way we're trending. Something can happen two days before that suddenly makes rates go, and suddenly you go, this might not be the thing we want to do. You know, somebody just dropped bombs in, you know, the Middle East and everybody's fighting now, well, that could send the market sky high, so you may go, yeah, we want to wait six months to see if it calms, calms back down. As you can see, on the election, it went up, even though they only raised rates a quarter point. Right. It jumped somewhere north of 100 basis points within a couple of days after the election. Yeah, it's gone back down, but it went up a point even though, after the election, things like that can happen, so therefore, that's why we have to look.
Any more questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate the information.
Y'all will vote on this later in the evening.
Yeah, we have action items on that later tonight. As far as the number of comments and things that I want to bring everybody up to date on, mostly it's information coming up in the next month as school is starting, but I want to bring some things to your attention. We are very excited that on Thursday, August 3rd, school will be beginning with teachers coming back and with our convocation, and Dr. Deidre Trent, who is the State Secretary of Education, will be joining us for that meeting. She will be giving the, the speech and speaking to the, all of our school staff. It's going to be a great program. Dr. Trent is a native of Halifax County. I've known her for many years, and I think you all got an invitation to participate in that this morning, and I would hope that you, if at all possible, will be in a position to be able to come join us for that. Likewise, on the 23rd of August, we have the State Board of Education that's going to be holding their fifth and final public hearing on Portrait of a Graduate in the state at Parkview High School. That's at 6:30, and we're very excited that we've been selected to be a part of that. We will be, there were invitations issued all over the state for persons to come and ask questions and hear comments about that, so I think it could be very beneficial for Mecklenburg County to have that opportunity to show off some of the things that we're doing. Again, they will be, the board members that will be attending from the State Board have invited our board members to come earlier if you want to meet with them and have personal conversation before the actual meeting. That could begin as early as 5 o'clock. As I get that final information, I will certainly let you know so that you can come in and have some additional conversation before the actual meeting starts for the public. On July the 25th, coming up very soon, I will be holding a meeting at Parkview High School for parents and students who are considering a career that requires a bachelor's, master's, or doctorate degree. I'm enthusiastic about this, and this is for all students who are looking at that. It's for our students, it's for homeschool students, it's for any students who want to talk about such things as the PSAT, the SAT, the AP, the other tests that are involved in college preparation, what do they do for you? We have a representative from College Board that's going to be coming and talking about that. We will be having a conversation about what is important as you prepare for college? Is it the rigor of your classes? Is it the GPA? What is a GPA? How do the colleges view those things? A representative from Longwood University and a representative from Mary Baldwin University will be with us to talk about some of those options as public and private. There will be a person who will be talking about finance, because obviously, the financial aid form is a significant issue, but beyond the financial aid form, there's all of the credit issues for students as they go. All the credit card companies want to get in there and start talking with students about having credit cards, and so there's going to be an opportunity for persons to even sign up and start taking some classes that will be available to students to, to learn how to manage those things very well. That will be a discussion. And then we'll talk about our own program of preparing students best for university as they leave us and prepare to go on and some of the options that we have for them. So that will be on the July the 25th at 7 o'clock in the gym at Parkview. We're having it, last year, we had a similar program at both schools. That's what obviously would be our goal, but to get all these people from outside agencies together, we have it at one. So we'll do it this year at Parkview, next year we'll do it at Bluestone, so that we're switching back and forth to give the important information. But it's available for students nine through 12 and their parents to come and have the conversation, and we invite them to do that. The new teacher welcome dinner that's sponsored by McBeep and several of the businesses in Mecklenburg County will be Wednesday evening, August the 2nd. That's always a very good time. It's a great opportunity to come and meet the new teachers. We have a large group of new teachers this year that we will be working with, and so we, we hope that those of you that can come and meet them will be there that evening. And it's going to be in Chase City this year at the Estes Center, so we're excited about that opportunity. Of course, the students return on August the 9th. It's early, but it's typically because of our calendar year, Christmas and all those things falling in, and our need to be able to have our SOL exams and first semester done by Christmas, so that when we come back, they won't be facing those after a long holiday. So, I know that many people are saying, you know, it's a short summer, but it's 180 days for students any way we look at it. So, we've had, got the chance to end early, we, we start early, and that's coming up before we have our next scheduled, regularly scheduled board meeting. I do also want to share that we have a teacher shortage in this state. We are still a few positions short of a full staff, and our administrators are doing a number of things to try to make up for that shortage. There'll be some opportunities for teachers that are currently working with us to maybe take on an extra class and get paid for it as opposed to a planning period. We're looking at finding as many opportunities for provisional certifications as we can get. There are limits to what we can do in some of that, but we've had some of that discussion. According to the state superintendent that I met with about this shortage, it's not just Mecklenburg County, there are over 1,000 teachers short in the state of Virginia, and it's just, it's a crisis. It'll be a legislative issue that we'll be seeing come up, and how do we deal with the crisis, particularly in Virginia? But that is, that is a concern of ours, and we want to work with, with people as we can on that. I also want to mention, because it has been brought to my attention, that in past years, when we have worked with our students on vision screening, the Lions Club in Mecklenburg County has worked very closely with us. And there was a state law passed that basically prohibited the typical screening opportunities from happening and making it so that one particular company that had some device, others didn't, was the only one that could work with school division nurses in the screening process. There is a caveat, and the Lions Club has asked me to let you know that they want to continue to work with us on our vision screening. It's beneficial to our students, it's beneficial for the Lions Club, they provide free glasses, they provide a lot of things for our students as they find their difficulties, and so very probably at the August meeting, as they get more information on what they need to do, I will be bringing you a recommendation for the caveat that the law allows so that we can continue to work with the Lions Club on that process. And I will get you information ahead of time as it's provided to me by the Lions Club for that purpose. I also had one person in the community since the last meeting who expressed a concern. It wasn't so much a concern as it was an observation that when he traveled overseas, foreign students in Europe were celebrating what the United States did in World Wars I and II to help provide... what the United States did in World Wars I and II to help provide freedom there. And all of the students were involved. And sometimes on our celebrations, we don't have students that are always at some of our programs. And he's just asking that we, as an administration, and we bring it up so that we can encourage more of our students participating as we have some of those things. So I, I told him that as he could not be here tonight for a public speaking, I would just bring it up as a topic for you all to understand. We're going to try to work with them on that, just as we are with club meetings and things of that nature. So that's what I have as far as superintendent's comments tonight. And then we can move on to the chairman's remarks and committee reports.
Yeah, I think we'll go on to committees, committee reports. First is the Joint Education Capital Improvement Committee. Do you have anything to report?
No report from me tonight.
Have they scheduled the next meeting yet for the joint education?
No.
No. Okay. And let's see, how about the Finance Committee?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee met this afternoon at 5 o'clock. Ms. Puffer, would you like to come and give a report on our proposed bus lease?
Evening, Mr. Chairperson, board members, Mr. Nichols. We would like permission to participate in a bus lease that will allow us to get at least 11 buses, possibly up to 12. We're participating with Sonny Merriman with a rebate program for our order buses. And so far, we received $91,000, which is basically a bus in rebates. And Mr. Mayhew is working on getting two more buses qualified for that rebate, which could possibly allow us to add a 12th bus for an additional $35,000. So we would like to participate, be allowed to participate in this lease for at least 11 buses, but possibly 12.
Do you already have any questions? All right, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, we also looked at the bills as they were presented, and we decided that we will now be having our Finance Committee meetings at 5 o'clock before our regularly scheduled meetings until further notice. And that's our report.
Okay, thank you. Gifted and Talented Special Ed Health and Family Committee?
The Governor's School Committee will meet next Wednesday. And it's a reorganization, getting ready for the new school year. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you. CT Career Technical Education Committee, nothing tonight. Athletic Discipline Committee?
Yes, the Athletic Committee met, and the ADs had a question of, as we're moving forward towards a consolidated school, the ADs suggested that they start looking at other opportunities, because the question has come up when the schools merge, what opportunities were these kids, for example, who currently play on a basketball team? Some of those kids may be left out. So this is just for information only tonight. It may come up for a vote later. But the Athletic Department or the Athletic Directors would like to consider competition cheer, which is currently at Parkview and not at Bluestone, wrestling, which is at Bluestone and not Parkview, as well as opening up opportunities for lacrosse, swim, indoor track, field hockey, tennis, gymnastics, and crew. So they're looking at, once these schools consolidate, provide more opportunities so our kids will have additional activities to participate in.
What was that last one?
Crew.
Crew.
Yes.
What is that?
Rowing.
Oh, okay.
Yes. That's all we have.
Thank you.
And one thing, we don't have to look for water, do we?
No.
All right, we're now to our public input portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk, has anybody signed up to speak?
No one tonight.
Okay. Now we're on to our action items for tonight. Can I have a motion that the minutes from the special, excuse me, a motion that the School Board approves the minutes from the special board meeting held on June 8th, 2017?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Honeycutt, seconded by Mr. Sturdivan, roll call.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Abstain.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Abstain. May I have this, a motion that the School Board approves the minutes for the regular school board meeting held on June 19th, 2017?
So, second.
I have a motion and a second for Mr. Palmer and Mr. Sturdivan, roll call.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Abstain.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Abstain.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. May I have a motion that the School Board approves the minutes of the special school board meeting held on June 26th, 2017?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Edwards, seconded by Mr. Sturdivan, roll call.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes, with exception.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Abstain. May I have a motion that the School Board approves the payment of the bills?
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends that the bills be paid as they were presented.
Okay, the Finance Committee has recommended that we pay the bills as they were presented, roll call.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. Now, hold on a second, I reloaded my agenda. Here we go. All right. Personnel, may I have a motion that the School Board approves the personnel recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Sturdivan, seconded by Mr. Edwards, roll call.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. May I have a motion that the School Board approves the personnel matter, PM 2017-2018-01?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for Ms. Garner, seconded by Mr. Sturdivan, roll call.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
No.
Mr. Campbell?
No.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Abstain. May I have a motion that the School Board approves the VPSA reimbursement resolution?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Sturdivan, seconded by Mr. Edwards, roll call.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. Okay, the school bonds resolution. May I have a motion that the School Board approves the school bonds resolution?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Edwards, seconded by Mr. Honeycutt, roll call.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. May I have a motion that the School Board approves the 2017-18 high school and middle school fee schedule?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Garner, seconded by Mr. Edwards, roll call.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. School bus lease, may I have a motion that the School Board approves the school bus lease?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Edwards, seconded by Mr. Johnson, roll call.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. Policy revisions, may I have a motion that the School Board approves the, excuse me, the revisions to policy E?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion for Ms. Bailey, seconded by Mr. Honeycutt, roll call.
Mr. Stur-
Discussion.
Discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, discussion.
The policy E revisions, this was given to us last month?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Another question.
Yes.
After we approved, will they, will they be implemented into, I mean, just go into our policy after that?
Yes, they go immediately.
They go immediately?
30 seconds after we vote.
Okay.
30 seconds, why so long?
Plus a minute, plus a minute.
All right, I have, is that all the discussion we have on that one? All right, I have a, I can't remember now who the motion and the second were from.
I made the motion.
I'm gonna have a second.
Okay, Ms. Bailey and Mr. Honeycutt, roll call.
Mr. Sturdivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Honeycutt?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Garner?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Ritchie?
Yes. All right, reminders. We have August 1st and 2nd, the new teacher orientation. August 3rd, convocation. August 7th, open house fee day. August 9th, first day of school. That's early. That's what my kids tell me. August 21st, regular school board meeting for the month. Now we're to board member remarks. Ms. Garner, do you have any remarks tonight?
Nothing.
Nothing. Mr. Sturdivan, do you have any?
Nothing.
Mr. Johnson?
Nothing.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes, yes, of course I do. We, several of us attended training in Richmond the last couple of days. Your chairman and I went for chairman-vicechairman training. And I always learn something when I go. Today, we had a great education conference in Richmond with presenters from all over the state, other school divisions, sharing their ideas about what's working in their divisions. And we hope that as we bring some ideas back, you know, I guess we'll, we communicate those with Mr. Nichols and those people in central office that are in charge of those things. And it's, it's exciting to see that other divisions do want to share and if, if something is working there. And so it's a, it, it really is, school divisions helping one another. And that hasn't always been the case. So we had a very productive meeting today. And thanks for, public for allowing us to move our meeting to tonight so that we could take advantage of that training. Thank you.
Mr. Edwards, anything?
No.
Mr. Palmer?
No.
Mr. Campbell?
Actually, yeah. On fee day, YOFSO will be having a distracted driver simulator at Parkview High School. State Farm Insurance has been gracious enough and gave a grant to YOFSO to purchase this. And they've chosen Parkview to unveil it. That will be the first time the event with that particular one is going to be used. We'll be there from 12 to whenever, 6, yeah. So anybody would like to come out, learn about the program, see if we can reduce some teen deaths? We'll be there. If the media would like to be there around, let's say, 4 o'clock for a presentation at Parkview High School?
Fee day.
August 7th, at 4 o'clock. There'll be a presentation of a, a big check or whatever to the YOFSO program from State Farm.